It's all yours.
Evening, everyone. Thank you for attending. Please join me for a play. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which it stands in my attention under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, alright, awesome. Well, unfortunate, not awesome, you know what I mean?
Okay, let's do a roll call.
We'll have Toby do that if we could. If you don't mind just saying the names, Toby.
No, I signed Tom Rose.
Here.
Need a trip?
I'm here.
Here. Joe Carroll?
Here.
Chris Miles?
Here.
Ella Collins?
Here.
Jamie Zanini?
Here.
Christina Durkey?
Here.
Dan Shields?
Awesome.
So Dan did reach out just a few minutes ago to let us know that he's got something that he needs to take care of. We wish him well for that, for a servant.
Alright, do we have any community comments, covered that you know?
I do not have any, and I do not see any in chat.
Awesome. Okay, let's move on. Dan, we have a September recognition of success.
Yeah, absolutely. So today was not perfect, but it was a good day overall. It took us a little longer than we'd like to get the students in in the morning. Probably took us till 8:30, 25 after, to be more truthful, to get everybody in. And then we had a good day inside the building. Students were very cooperative, staff was very cooperative, very helpful, everybody was pitching in. And at the end of the day, for the K3 dismissal, doing it around the track was very safe. It did take us about 35 minutes to accomplish it, but we moved, you figure about 200 students from their classrooms to the gymnasium socially distanced, to their parents socially distanced, and out the door. And that's meeting our students for the first time today, trying to get them out of the gymnasium with their masks on. We're trying to figure out who they are with their masks on. So that time will get better. But as far as the traffic pattern around the track, it went very well. So we're gonna have some more computers out in the morning for the screening to get the students in. And we're gonna do it with multiple lines. Instead of having a paper-only line or a computer-only line, it's gonna be next. We'll take next. So each line will be able to do paper and computer. All these students will have to move to a separate line of those that haven't been screened at all. The 20 parents that are out there, what I would do is just urge you to do the computerized screening. It will help us in the morning. It also helps us not having to enter that information manually out those paper slips because that's what we have to do with the paper slips. And I did a telephone call this morning to parents at 6:30, asked them to please remember to do the screening. It also went to our staff members to do the screening. I'll be doing that for at least a few more days to help people remember that part of our new routine in the morning. So I just want to thank the students and our staff, staff and faculty. It could not have happened without all their cooperation. I was very impressed with the way the cafeteria went too. It was amazing. Probably the best part of my day, not that it was a bad day, it was a good day, was seeing that primary group of students towards the end of their lunchtime, they were talking with their friends six feet apart in their desks, but it wasn't like everybody was quiet sitting like this looking forward. They were having some social time, socially distanced, so that was good. Middle school was pretty quiet, and I didn't see the high school. But we ran pretty good today, and Toby can attest to that as well. So we'd like to get some students for our October reading, some specific people, but that's what I wanted to do today, is talk about how that went. Thanks, everybody, for pitching in. And for the parents for being very patient in some long lines today. Sure.
So the bulk of it was just the testing happening, the code up, is that it?
Correct. Yeah, and then have everybody come for the first time and figure out how it works. So several times out front, for example, in the morning, we had to say, I had to go before that, we had to say, well, the line starts down, and down there was a ways, and then some people were lining up in different directions. So then we started to figure out how to merge lines together and help. First person in this line, then the person that one, then the person that one, and kind of keep kids and everybody moving.
Awesome.
Everybody was very cooperative.
Thank you for that, Dan, appreciate it. Thank you, everyone, for coming today. Alright, no presentations this meeting. Board committees, I don't think we have to set any this evening except for possibly grievance negotiations. Have you got to set that tonight?
So we don't? We have, our agreements has been pushed to the month of January for the next possible meeting time. So I'll provide more information when I have it. The one that I put on there is we would want to talk about audit committee, which actually the entire board acts as our audit committee, because Charlene has been working feverishly to get things for our auditors. And at some point, the committee's gonna have to have a conversation with them. And I think the committee might want to have a conversation with them before they are done, if there's specific things you want to ask questions about first to see if they can look at them for you. As you know, they work directly for you. They don't work for me, and there's a reason for that.
So that's the finance committee, right?
Audit finance, yeah. But anybody's welcome.
So when do you want to schedule that, tonight? You want to give us some dates?
Let me get some dates, because we have to coordinate with them.
Gotcha. Any questions on committee's phones? Alright, Dan, you are superintendent for board.
Yeah, so really quickly, I'm gonna run out to our homepage for the board, and I realize that everybody can see it home. And that's just a real quick thing. So on our web page, I just wanted to show the board where the health screening form for the students is. I also wanted to just follow up on the webpage and the, whatever, UFSD and South Plains Falls annexation webpage. Last meeting, somebody had said the form was not open. The form has been open. But as of last Thursday, there was only two people total that had gone in and said they want to be a part of the committee. So publicly, I'd like to ask the board to encourage people, and certainly the people on the call to go in and fill out the form. If you have in the last four or five days, then you're probably good. But if not, there was only two on there, so we want to have it.
Can you explain a little bit about that committee more so folks?
Yeah, so looking for people to represent our school in the entire process. So if you go into that webpage, and I'll show the board, if you go into that webpage and hit the committee, it talks about what you have to be able to do, and what they're gonna be looking at. And it lets you hit the worker-study application, and it's gonna ask you if you can be available, if you'll commit to these dates. Because we really need people who are gonna be at all the meetings, not just one of the meetings. See, a consistent group that's talking about all of the areas that they're gonna talk about in there. So that's the biggest part of being on the committee, is be able to make all the dates.
That's fine, probably, right?
Yep, yep. I would have tested it. Attend all committee meetings, feelings, pressure, point of view. You can see what they're looking for there. And it's pretty simple. I would have tested it to make sure that it would work. And it takes you through that, and I can't go to the next page unless I were to fill it out. I don't want to climb the sheet up for that. But it's two, it's this page and there's one more page. And that is, it does take a long time to put your name on that list. But you folks are gonna have to talk about who we're gonna choose from the list of people that we get as we move forward, so.
Yeah, it's important to say that no matter which side of the debate, if we want to call it debate you're on, it's important to be represented on these committees. It's an important part of the process. It helps the folks that are preparing the report to get feedback from the community and other shareholders. They can answer questions, they can address questions, they can research them. So if you really want to be heard or be a part of the process, this is the most, this is the best way of being part of that process, other than obviously exercising your vote. So if you want to be in the know and see how this process goes and report back to your friends how it's going, they invite anyone, any shareholder, doesn't matter if you're pro or against, they would just want some folks sitting on those committees. So if you're interested and can invest the time, it would be great to have some folks participate in those groups.
So real quickly, Sam, can you tell me if you can see my screen, which would be the school webpage?
I don't see that. I see just the FE logo. Not even FE logo, just it's an FE screening. I do not see your webpage.
Alright, so I'm gonna have difficulty showing people the way we've got it set up up here tonight. Anyway, we're just giving them.
In the background behind Ella, I can see the, what you're trying to show, I think.
Okay.
But I'm not seeing that being displayed. Okay, yep, yep.
Well improvised. First thing, so just wanted to show the board what the health screening form looks like. And I know you probably can't see that at home, and maybe you can't see it from here, but you could want to take a look. Some people had to do it today.
Some people do it from their phone?
Yeah, you can do it right from your telephone. You can push shortcut on there. I have one on my phone for the adult screening. I push the purple button, I answer the questions, and you're done. So I just, and I'll go back and show people from home now that I figured out a shortcut to do it. Here's where the annexation webpage is, and up here is where you can see about the committee. If you click that, you can read about the committee makeup, and at the bottom, you can click merger study application, so you can become a member. Okay? The super tennis days, I do want to say that we had a very, very successful four super tennis days, although the amount of work that needed to be done, we could have had 14 conference days. Sam, are you including that in your report a little bit later, or do you want to speak to it now? If you're doing it later, that's okay, we'll wait.
I mean, I've got a little bit on it later. I mean, again, I will echo Dan's statement there. We could have spent 14 days, and I see Chris Miles there, I joke with him back and forth a little bit as well, kind of over some things. We could have spent 14 days doing that and still not have been able to cover all of the things we needed to do. But we're a school, and we work with our children, and I'll get back to that part in a minute. I'll address it now, actually. So we actually had a few different things built into it. A special thank you to Sarah Batiste from Bosse's. She came onsite and did a three-hour, it was a two-part workshop over the course of three hours, that was really developed based off some feedback with staff, as well as some work that Dan and I did over the summer with Bosse's. But again, great, great, really targeted PD on how to connect with students in person, how to connect with students remotely, and how to connect with students remotely and in person at the same time, and bringing those together. So that was really a high-quality PD. And also Lori Gion from Bosse's did a great kind of self-taught, it was a two-hour video that she developed that staff worked through one piece at a time, on really how to maximize the efficiency of Google Classroom. So both of those components were huge and really targeted specifically for supporting staff this year. And then again, the support staff did a phenomenal job in working with Dan, going over the arrival and dismissal procedures. And I really think, you know, that's a testament, the work that they put in and the success that we had today is a direct result of really the collaborative efforts on everybody's part there. And again, the staff had their annual updates for safety and awareness and all those things. But I'll leave that on the PD. If there's anything else you want to add, Dan, go ahead.
Yeah, I'll talk to some of the annual trainings that we did, but that's great, Sam, thank you. So we also did, all the staff had online sexual harassment training, the right-to-know ASCOM training. Those that had applicable had the blood work pathogen training. We had a new training this year that was returning to school amidst the pandemic. It was put together for us by the NITO Risk Safety Management Group that we now work with. It used to be Bosse's, can't reach Bosse, but now it's NITO. Our Bosse service providers can get the same aid back at the same cost. The service has been fantastic. So it was a good trade-up. We had a new, that was a new online portal, everybody had to learn very quickly. They did so. We had a couple glitches with one specific training, it was a DAS update training, and one of the videos didn't work for a two. But everybody was great. They probably had a little bit better than three hours of online refresher training through that portal that they had to do over the course of days. We blocked out some time each day, so it wasn't all of that in one, because that would be no fun for anyone. So we split up a little bit. So we are caught up, because we were canceled a week prior to us doing our sexual harassment refresher back in March. We were scheduled for March 20th, we were supposed to do it last year, so we're at it right now. Moving down the list, remote and in-person learning, 10 weeks concerned. Just want to put it out there for the board, and Sam can speak to it too. We are at capacity in the elementary school, and that's with the number of remote learners that are outside the building right now. So we made people say that they would be out for at least 10 weeks. In 10 weeks, if social distancing does not change, we do not have the faculty, staff, or building capacity to bring the rest of those students back. So I don't want that to be a surprise in 10 weeks that we have to talk about the model for the elementary school. And maybe there'll be people who want to continue doing remote. I've had a couple of students in the middle high school who have reached out and, I don't want to be remote anymore, I want to be in person. We've had to tell them, we gotta stick with remote for now because we've got it set this way. So I want to just put that on the board's radar, that we are at capacity, and actually, we've got some students who want to come back to the elementary school as well in person, and we cannot accommodate them at this point, because we're full. Is that a fair statement, Sam, based on the?
Yeah, yeah, there's three classrooms specifically that are, I mean, they, we are at capacity to like to the square inch. I mean, we have support, some support staff, we don't even have a desk, honestly, in the name of getting some students in those rooms. That is a very fair statement. I would, yes, I'll agree.
Dan, what the involvement towards the beginning of the school year, do we see an increase? Do we, what kind of numbers did we turn out? I know some schools in the area had some huge increases, because a lot of people in the city decided to not go back now. So they're rolling a lot of schools up here. I'm wondering if we had any interest with us.
Yeah, so I wouldn't say a huge, I wouldn't say a huge increase, but we did have, we had some late registrations, and, but we're pretty well. We also had some transfers.
Usual numbers.
Usual numbers. No spike of like 40 students coming in or going out. You know, you have a dozen come in and a dozen go out. I would exactly feel comfortable with those numbers. And I'll get this screen to go for you, folks.
Being at capacity now, we wouldn't be able to have anybody to transfer or do registrations at this point, correct?
Well, you still have to, by law, you have to enroll students. It's as many choices for the model that they want to be a part of. But if somebody moves here, they thought of registration paperwork, and they approve residency, you're required to enroll them in a timely fashion. So we can't just say we're not enrolling anybody.
We just be virtual at this point?
Right now, right now, we're telling folks, when you come in, if they're coming to a grade level that's full in person, we're trying to make must-go-virtual, and supplying them with the appropriate technology to do so.
Is every grade at an max capacity?
In the elementary school, there's at least four. So I can quickly say fourth grade, fifth grade, kindergarten, I think young with second grade, and I can, but definitely those first grade, four, five, and K are full.
Does the capacity go by the classrooms or this actual building?
So it's room size, and it's a six feet spacing, is what's the term in the room size. So we already moved our, our fourth graders are in what used to be the band room, now we call that the fourth grade room. Our fifth graders are down in what used to be the chorus room where Mrs. Haller was, because that's like a 1200 square foot classroom. And we moved our band and chorus classes to the auditorium because they have to have the 12-foot spacing. And we have them, even with the half numbers for chorus and band in the middle high school, we can just fit what we have, because they have to be double distance apart to do singing and playing of instruments. So that's where we are.
Dan, I know you said that some people, some of their desks were removed. Has a lot of furniture and oak shelves and all that stuff been removed from all of the garage?
Yeah, absolutely.
So you cleaned out a lot of storage areas for these things we needed to.
Yeah, right now, our bus garage, there's one band that's about 2/3 full of the stuff we took out of the elementary school. And then there's two classrooms in the elementary school, full-size rooms, that we put stuff in.
So they're going to all right now?
Right. So if you go down, and that's on my list, the building walkthrough. When you see it, it's different, for sure. My staff's done a good job making it look very welcoming. I think, that's my opinion. You guys can see for yourself something like that.
So Dan, do you think so it's more about the building size than it is the staff that we have on, or just looking forward?
Well, it's the staff, because we have one section kindergarten, so we want to bring in more kindergartners. Could I have somebody move all that furniture out of the room that it's all stuffed in now in the elementary school, put it in the bus garage? Probably. But you have to have a teacher, or at the very least, a teaching assistant, which there's certainly an associated cost for that.
I know we can't use it for classrooms, but what about the annexed building?
So the annexes can be used to store stuff.
Be great if we use questions.
Yeah, we cannot, it's designated, it's, it's fire certificates, building permit, it's, we must, certificate of accuracy, I get the right word, it's storage only. There's no heat out there.
We're gonna tie your salt in too, by the way, a couple months ago. Right. Tougher stuff.
So, go ahead.
For the other, we have like menos and other people who use our facility for what they need, do we have to worry about that for the capacity piece, or are they under the same guidelines I was considering?
They're under the same guidelines, yeah, they're under the same guidelines as we are. And actually, some of theirs, because they also have to answer for the office of family and child services, because they're preschool. Some of theirs are more stringent, but they are taking care of their own guidelines. What I'm asking them for is copies of their screening information, and also copies or information on their students in the building, teachers in the building, and other staff in the building, because they have to report that on the Department of Health dashboard, that the governor's talking about, always thinking, I'll report this. So I am getting information from them to add to our report to cover all the young people and the staff in our building. So, yeah, their followings are pretty stringent guidelines. They're also checking all their students at the front in screening. They bought nice white jackets for their people to screen. They have like doctors out there. Patty Works wearing her doctor's coat out there. Their staff standing through the back, and if you came in the back, I know you did, there's blue dots out there. Their staff stands on those dots and waits for their screener to come out and screen them. So they're screening everybody every day, where we're using the option, where staff can screen, and I can spot check, or the district can spot check as needed. Yeah, they're definitely, they have plenty of, they have the same requirements, have an isolation room, they have all the same requirements, and that's all.
Is there a separate one in ours, I would assume?
They're isolation room? Yes, it is. Yeah, they have their own. They're using one of the designated, one of the areas they lease from us as their area. The offices right downstairs, like eight by, 10 by 10, eight by 10 office area. We're using a much larger space.
Dan, do you see yourself in 10 weeks sending out another survey, or just trying to keep track of the families in my line?
I would say probably in eight weeks. I would say somewhere around October, everything now happens before October 14th in my timeline. So beginning of October would be the next time we'll try to set stuff out. There's a couple reasons for that, because that gives us enough time. We want to be in week 10 and find out we've got 100 more kids. And week eight, we want to have a conversation, both inside, Sam and I, and the other applicable people. And then to let you guys know kind of where we're at, what we're thinking, who we're for. And I want to do, selfishly, I want to do it before, before Sam is not the person that has helped me. It's just, he's been through this summer with me. We've been doing it together, I should say, collaboratively, and it's been a, it's been a good process. Challenging process, but it's filled with a great part. I'll say it that way.
Awesome. Did we hit everything? Did you talk about the roll call?
Yeah, so the walkthrough, I can send out another doodle, or if there's, if you want to do something tonight when we're done, I'm happy to take people around. I'll do whatever you want. But I just could not get it in before, everything was about getting the kids in today. The next couple of days will be about refining the process, but I'm happy to take you guys through whenever you want to see things. It's better if we don't do it when there's kids here, because there's a lot of, again, not because I don't want you to see the kids moving around, but it makes one more thing we're managing moving around the building.
Peter Fisher, all right. Well, good.
I am, that's what I had.
Treasure report, can you show me on the screen?
Yep, so, oh, yeah, so I gotta get back to the video. So I, whoops, sorry. So Charlene, we can see, I sent Charlene, you guys asked a few questions at the last board meeting. What was about state aid payments, or two were about state aid payments. Last year's state aid and this year's state aid. So I asked Charlene if she could talk about that. And she provided a couple of sheets which you got when you came in today. Charlene, they have, they have both pages of that spreadsheet that you put in the drive, the ones from state aid planning.
Okay, I'll just explain where we're at right now to the best of my ability, and it's changing daily. So right now, we're estimating for last year's aid, so this is 1920 aid, that the state is going to hold back 142,500. So that's 20% on our gen aid receivable, 20% on our excess cost aid receivable, and the biggest share was 20% on our Bosse's aid receivable, which was almost $56,000, and 20% on our 4408 summer school program from last July and August. So, you know, John's verified all my numbers at state aid planning, question R3, state aid planning, we pay for that service, and John's been absolutely wonderful, threw all this together for me last minute. So he also looked at the current fiscal year. And so those aid payments are all already being reduced by 20%. So we're already seeing that in August and September. So now, starting in with our current fiscal year, John also ran the numbers for me. And best-case scenario is a holdback of, let me find it here, make sure I've got the right one, got somebody here, my other pile. Best-case scenario is a holdback of about 775,000. So that's if they just hold back on the legally established dates where state aid is supposed to be released. And so that would be your gen aid. That's, like I said, the best-case scenario. Worst-case scenario is 1,036,000. And so that's if they withhold from all of the aid. Now, we don't know, and they won't tell anybody. And so they're keeping, they're keeping all this close to the best. I sent you what state aid, the release that we got before they started holding back 20%. I guess really the worst, worst-case scenario is these holdbacks become permanent, and so, so that we never, never do get that money back. And that's a very, very, very possibility, because that's what the governor promised us, if he didn't get federal aid. And if you're following the federal government, the Senate just proposed a small, several million dollar proposal by the Republicans, and Rand Paul voted against it, and so that voted, that was voted down. And I just think because of the political atmosphere right now, that we're not gonna see any federal aid, you know, before the election, or who knows, even after the election. So if you looked at the, if you looked at the debt for the fiscal year that the federal government has incurred, it doesn't look good. It's, I think they said something about this is the worst debt we've had in one fiscal year since World War II. So, you know, we just need to be realistic. A holdback is one thing, it puts a really horrible, puts us in a horrible cash flow situation, and we don't have fund balance or reserves to go to, and we can't really afford to borrow, because then you have to pay the interest on it. But if they, if it becomes permanent, and as soon as we'll know that is October, they, the release did say that in October, they would make a decision after the, that's the second quarter of the state's fiscal year, that they would make a decision, and that they would tell us what the cuts are going to be. So I think that's as soon as we're really gonna hear anything from the state, and it doesn't matter who's asking, or how many people are asking, they just are not, they aren't saying, they aren't telling us. So all we've gotten is that one release from the state, that's it. And the holdback of 20%. That's my report.
Charlene, can you just, can you say that 1920 number again?
1920, right now, we're at 142,500.
Thank you.
Yeah, that's general aid, excess cost aid, Bosse's aid, because almost Yeah, that's general aid, excess cost aid, BOSI's aid, that's almost 56,000. And a little bit on the 4408 summer program from last July and August.
Excellent. Thank you. I'm gonna, I'm just gonna add a little bit. The Post-Rod did an article, they met with a group of superintendents last week at the editorial board. And they've done two articles actually. And in the print article that went out, I'm certain that there was a mistake in it. And here comes this gentleman right here. You couldn't have timed it any better, Michael Gu. So in the, in the print article that went out, it said that our budget gap was $130,000. So I saw that get posted Saturday evening. And I reached out to Mr. Gu at the Post-Rod and said, our budget gap, if you take 20% of our, of all of our aid, is $1,442,000. And I let, uh, I let Mr. Gu know that it was very important that that number be corrected. He did correct it in the online version, but obviously the, actually I didn't see the print version. I'm assuming that the print version probably went out with the wrong number of 130,000. So if you, our community, if people are talking about the print version, please let them know that, no, our gap is not 130,000. Because that seems like very easy, right? It's 1.442 million dollars. It has to be 20% of all aid. And I heard Charlene's numbers there, e- even with her having somebody segregate all the aids. Um, it's, it's 1,36,000. So either way, it's not 130,000. So the 1,442,000 is the number that I have been using. I calculated the same exact way all the other local superintendents did when we advocated with the editorial board. We spoke with them about what we were trying to do, the message we were trying to get across. As well as on telephone calls with Assemblywoman Carrie Warner, telephone call with Paul Tonko, telephone call with Elise Stefanic. And the one with Elise Stefanic was the most, they were all last week. Uh, but one with Elise Stefanic was Friday afternoon at three o'clock. Uh, so she, she specifically asked if school districts were sharing their information. And she specifically asked if the board game was on the line. So I did share that with her along with all the reductions we've made up to this point, um, to keep things moving along here at the court. So just wanted to put that out there for the public to make sure anybody who saw it in print, that, that 130,000 is, uh, just, it was just, you know, it happens. It was just, just a piece. And there was a lot of people talking in that home conversation that day, so I'm not putting it on Michael. But I appreciate him fixing it for us in the online version for everybody. And a lot of people are accessing their news that way, but some of our, some of our residents are still using their newspaper. So if you hear from them, they might say, what's 130,000? Well, that is a lot of money, but 1.4 million is a lot more.
We kind of wish it was more.
Hey, thanks, Charlene.
Charlene, I got, I got something for you quick. I don't know if anyone else does. But we're gonna have to table the treasurer's report for June 2020. I think what was uploaded was 19. Is that correct?
Yeah, we put, uh, we put July up. July is all done and it's up there for you. I apologize. I was trying to clean up some things in the folder. I thought Norma had put that in the wrong folder and so I moved it. It was last year. I apologize. But July is up there. July is done. There just isn't really a lot of activity in July and August. We really, it's just bare bones. Uh, it's just, you know, the bare bones support staff at the school with administration. And, you know, we just don't get a lot of cash flow. So we'll get that stuff to you. But next month, you're gonna have, you're gonna have a whirlwind. You're gonna have July, June, July and August and September. And hopefully you'll have your audited financial statements too. So, um, things are really starting to pick up. We're just, uh, the auditors are coming next week. And I just want to make sure I have everything ready for them. So I want you guys to have good numbers. And we're trying to clean up a lot of stuff that just was not cleaned up last year. And I really, I really want, um, what I would call, you know, acceptable to me financial statements out there this year. So.
No, I appreciate it. And it happens. I just thought I was flashing back. Um, the other thing I noticed, and it's just me not being a bean counter, I think. Um, there was a, there was a revenue report that was uploaded on the packet. And I was a little bit confused by the fact that we had a budget amount, an estimated amount, a revised amount. And then an earned amount. And the earned amount was sometimes higher than the anticipated amount, but it showed a negative. And so I don't know if I'm understanding what earned means because it seems that it should be a positive if you have more earned than anticipated.
Yeah, no, unfortunately it compares to budget. So if you budgeted less than you earned, then it shows up as a negative. So it's, it's just kind of an odd report, but it just, it just, it is what it is.
Okay, so, so, but in the earned column are absolute negatives? So when you total that earned column at the end, it's a deficit?
I, I'm not looking at that report right now. Let me, let me grab it.
We can talk about it off line emails, but it's just confusing reviewing it.
Yeah, yeah. I would just not focus on that, that last column. So it, it, just look at the earned revenue. That's your, that's your actual revenue.
You're talking about the actual revenue because of the negative variances that showed up on that.
Whatever column says earned.
Yeah, well, some they were spent and the other was earned. So you had the negative variances on depending on what you're pulling up. But I didn't like you said, some.
Yeah, it was a little weird. But I appreciate it. If I have a question once I, once I look.
I did see a negative. Okay, you're talking about that negative under cafeteria? Is that the one you're talking about?
Even the first, I'm sorry, I don't have my Chromebook in front of me, but.
Negative I see in earned revenue.
I'll, I'll review it in more depth and if I have any questions.
All right, all right. I'd be happy to, to discuss that and, and clear up any confusion.
Thank you. Okay, thank you, Charlene. Mr. Ratty.
All right. Um, so I've gone over how I want to do my report here, but, uh, I've got to start out with a few thank yous. Um, and I try to prioritize the most important stuff at the top. And I, and we wouldn't be where we're at as a school here today without some of the thank yous. So, um, you know, I want to give a thank you to obviously the staff that was working throughout the summer. To Mindy and Leisha specifically, thank you for the on and off over the summer, all throughout it. So and also to Toby as well. I'll use the term retired in quotes because she has been working quite a bit this summer as well. So to the, the office staff, thank you. I also would like to put a very special thank you out there to three individuals from the community that have asked to remain anonymous, that made some very generous donations of supplies for both students and staff that, um, again, were, were very generous donations. So there's some things I want to get out of the way there just from the get go. Um, I'd like to welcome the, our new staff members, Kendra Capone, Paige Toomey and Russ Batty. Kendra being our, our school nurse, Paige taking over for a, a science position and, and Russ for special ed. So obviously they're all board approved. So thank you for all of those. Those are three high quality staff members that will benefit our students for a long time to come. And really want to wish all of them the best of luck as they get started today. I had a chance to pop into some of the rooms, just kind of do a little pulse check. And everyone seemed to be happy and smiles and going there. So really looking forward to the opportunity to work with them as well as for them to support our students. So I'll, I'll start with today. We're back. Uh, we're back. And thank you to the students and staff. Uh, again, Mr. Ward hit on it a minute ago. The students were absolutely phenomenal today. Uh, very understanding, very patient at times and very respectful of the systems that we put in place. You know, we spent all summer planning and changing plans and planning and changing plans, trying to make it the best opening possible. And it truly was. You know, obviously the, the, the time of getting kids in, that's something to work on. But looking back, it was a great day and I really, that's a testament to the staff, their involvement for the planning. Um, you know, the conversation that Mr. Ward and I had throughout the summer. And just again, I'm gonna bring it back to the students as well. The, the kids were just a great, we have great kids here. And, and their, their participation and their openness to working how we work today, it was, it was great. So, so really that, it was a, not your ideal back to school day, but given everything I had to work with, it was a great day back to school. Um, the arrival, we were working on that. We have some ideas to, to speed up that, that process. Uh, during the day itself, really no issues moving about the building. The, the kids respected the, the hallway signs we put in. They respected the staircases that we were using, the up and down. They respected the socially, the socially distant guidelines that we put in place. That really, again, the kids were great. Um, and then for dismissal, you know, 305, we were done. There, there's some things to work on that we can, we can improve that. But again, we had, you know, 90, minimum of 90 more kids, 100 more kids being dismissed. I mean, maybe normally would not, you know, having on the, on the buses. So really the, the kids did a great job as part of that process. And again, the staff, the, the staff was absolutely phenomenal from, from arrival at 7:30 till dismissal, 305, 315, 330. I mean, you know, dismissal, every single kid was picked up. I know that's, you're thinking they probably should be, but sometimes we have some miscommunications. Um, every single kid was, was picked up and that went great. Uh, thank you to the, uh, to the police department, specifically Officer Raji for helping out with that as well. Uh, he was, he was right there on site. So, um, in terms of some updates since the last meeting, it's been a little while there. Um, so we've spent a lot of time working with the K5 staff, really getting to know the ins and outs of the systems that they have in place. Uh, and really I just want to thank the K5 staff for their, um, their flexibility and working on some of these things. It's certainly a lot of great ideas that were out there and we kind of bounce some ideas off of each other. Again, I'm an open notebook to them and they were very receptive to some of the, the feedback that we had back and forth there. Um, and, you know, my goal with working with the K5 staff is, is to put some systems in place that they've already put in place that will allow for success long-term regardless of who the principal might be. You know, a lot of them have worked really hard to put some systems in place and I want those to continue, you know, long after, after I'm gone. And the 612 staff, phenomenal. Really talking with all the staff, really great attendance from our remote learners today. Uh, that was one of the questions we had of what would be the engagement day one of the remote learners? We're trying to get some things out there. Almost all the remote learners were logged on. Uh, there were a few technical issues here and there, but, um, again, that, you know, we have been putting information out there, putting information out there. And I, I think the success of today really ties back to that. Um, but again, I always with the start of the school year, our, our school counselors, um, really working around the clock. Uh, I know, I know Mrs. LaBaron, I was working with her this afternoon. But really again, a huge thank you to Mrs. Scotch. Mrs. Scotch made a number of schedule changes trying to accommodate some of the students' needs. Um, and again, Mrs. Scotch and I typically work very closely day in and day out. We were both so busy today, we, like 3:30, we both got back to the office together and said, oh, hey, how you doing? Uh, really that, that's how today went. Um, and tomorrow will be our B group. So everything today, we have to do it all over again tomorrow. We'll run it, run it up one, one more time. So, um, again, we hit on it a little bit here, but really, um, you know, since the last board meeting, a lot, a lot of work with staff leading up in the weeks leading up to this. Uh, again, thank you to BOSI, Sarah Batiste, Lori Gion for, for their PD sessions. Um, this was PD specifically, you know, I, I talked with the staff and I had some ideas what I wanted to work on. I know Dan had some ideas what he wanted to work on, but, but really, you know, I talked with the staff and I, you know, I asked them, what is it that, that you guys want as, as PD to support you as, as we open up this year? And it was a lot of, um, you know, some, some best practices approaches towards hybrid learning and how to engage learners. And it really, a lot of great feedback there. And so that was good. Um, in terms of working with the K5 staff as well, we got a lot of ins and outs working on the schedule. The, we did some, end of the summer crunching with the schedule. And I'd like to put a special thank you out there to Jeff Tully, Jess Smatko and Debbie LaBaron for their assistance in getting that schedule up and going within a few days there. Um, and obviously trying to build in some support staff there as well, which is, uh, you know, something we have to monitor as we go into this year. Um, and again, I've got some follow-up meetings scheduled with all of the staff. I'll be meeting with the, uh, the 612 staff on Wednesday. I'm trying to meet with the support staff tomorrow. I'll be meeting with the K5 staff. Um, really it's just of a, you know, more of a, hey, let's touch base. We had these plans in place. Uh, what are some improvements we can make for success throughout the year? You know, we're not going to try and reinvent the wheel here. We put a lot of things in place and a lot of good ideas kicking around there. But let's, you know, there's, we're not going to perfect anything overnight, but if we can make some improvements each day, that, that's, that's going to be the best thing we can do here and everyone's on board with that. And in terms of, uh, planning, you know, some, some plans I've had, some plans I had here. Like I said, I'll be meeting with the, the support staff. Again, I cannot thank the support staff enough for their flexibility today. Um, there were people going every direction. Um, and anytime I made a call, I said, hey, I need somebody here. They were there in an instant. Um, and certainly some people were working in areas that were not on their schedule when they started. But, you know, as we said going into it, the theme for this year was, was flexibility. And it was all, all hands on deck. And today was a true example of all hands, all, all hands on deck. And again, I just, a sincere thank you from the top to the bottom, every single person that was part of today. Um, either, either onsite or leading up to it. Today's success was a result of the collaboration with all of you. And, um, again, I, I put an email out to staff. There, there was never any point today where I took a step back. I was like, oh, this isn't going to happen. Never once did that happen. Every time I walked around a corner, every time I went to a classroom, I, I saw staff doing what they do best. And it was leading our kids. And each, every, every minute it was something new. And that's what, that's what we do. You know, we, we specialize in teaching children and, and that's what we did. And, uh, you know, today was a great day. Back to that. So. Um, I'll leave it off at that. And like I said, I've got some things planned here for the next month ahead. I'll be working with some staff to put some systems in place. But, um, again, today was a good day and do it all again tomorrow.
Thanks a lot, Sam. Appreciate your work again, especially with your short term. Certainly not showing signs of short term, so that's, we appreciate that.
And Toby, I know you're right there. I will send you my agenda. So before you're freaking out trying to get all what I just said there, I will send, I'll send my agenda over to you.
Okay, buildings and grounds.
Yeah, Craig, are you on the call?
I'm on.
You want to go, you want to give your report for us, please?
Yeah, uh, I'm gonna go off what I wrote. Uh, I did a quick report this morning. Um, I was in a, in a hurry. But first of all, I want to like to thank the cleaning staff. And I think they should be recognized for all the hard work that was put in during the summer and also today. Um, there's, and moving forward, what's going to be put on the shoulders of my staff. Um, I, I understand the teachers have a lot to do, but we have a lot to keep the building safe, sanitized and clean. Um, so, uh, everything was in place today. Uh, I didn't see everything happen and unfold throughout the whole day because I had to go up to Fort Anne. But, uh, all PPE was distributed throughout to all the classrooms prior to teachers and staff coming in. Signage was placed up. Um, me and Mr. Ward put out a schedule in place for my staff so we could clean and disinfect the school at the end of the day. There's probably, there's going to be some kinks in there along the way. But we'll iron them out and it's a trial and error process, basically. So we'll see what works and what doesn't and we'll fix it from there. And do the best as possible to keep everybody that's entering the fort safe as could be. So the schedules we, I created and Mr. Ward did, I'm hoping that it will work and, uh, we'll just go from there.
Appreciate, appreciate you and your crew's work on all this stuff. I know it wasn't an easy task for sure. And it's going to continue to be taxing. So thank you, Craig.
Hey Craig.
You're welcome.
It can't be easy doing two and a half days here, two and a half days up there. You have two schools, these are straight procedure protocols, sometimes different, different buildings. So I appreciate the work. And I was happy to see you up here Saturday mowing the lawn. Saturday, you had a smile on your face around my mind.
Yeah, I didn't want, I was up there Saturday because I needed some loose ends to tie up prior to the kids and staff coming back to the school. Um, so I, I asked Mr. Ward and he authorized it. So that's why I was there.
Well, the place looked good, so I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Work every Saturday and happy Sunday.
I'll do what has to be done.
That we, that we, thanks. Couldn't get to, so Craig was here. I would echo what Craig said and Sam said, just people have been doing a great job and the cleaning staff has, and, and made this happen. Ben, fantastic. But there is, there is a lot to do. That's understatement to make this happen for our kids and for our staff. So everybody's working hard.
Thanks. Any more questions for Craig? Moving along, discussion items. Go to the floor, Dan.
Yeah, so the walk, walk through, do you want to talk about what you guys wanted? I put it there so we could figure out what you wanted to do and want me to just send out some, try to send out some dates like I was going to last time.
Yeah, give yourself a little bit of time.
Are you okay?
You're okay.
Yeah, okay, so I'll, um.
Maybe do it before the next board. You know what I mean? We come a half an hour before the board meeting and we kind of do a walk around. Does that work for everybody? Does that work for everybody?
Keep it limited to half an hour.
I'll aim for that.
Like an hour.
Yeah. And then, sorry, I just spoke about advocacy. We're hitting that pretty hard because the feeling is that we have to do that now. And you heard what Charlie said, we're concerned that, that the federal government won't do something because until after the election. And really, that's just a little too late if there's a $1 million budget gap. It's a little too late. I didn't know if you guys had any, any other ideas or a few folks have spoken to anybody out there? If we could share that around the table, if you happen to be someplace where Kerry Warner was or Lisa Fonic was, or any of those types of things, if you have, just so we could share it.
Tuesday, Sunday, but I wasn't there.
I talked, I talked her Sunday, she's. She's open on board, she knows, she's very well aware of what's going on, she's intuitive, true to our problems and she seems to be a really strong advocate, so it wasn't very, very helpful. Awesome.
Yeah, while we're talking about that, getting support and talk about, we began speaking about it last meeting. So we run out of money eventually, right? Or we start to see less and less money come as it comes in. What's our first reaction to that as far as operational?
Yeah, so I, so a lot of thought about this and you've seen some school districts, some larger school districts, women's south appear, their first operational change was to go full remote. Because it certainly takes less staff to go full remote. And that's difficult to say three minutes after saying how fantastic our staff has been because they have been. But that's the operational change. We aren't, we aren't going to be able to say, okay, we're going to eliminate athletics. Okay, we're going to cut back our transportation. Okay, we're going to do this because we already did it to get where we are. That's one of the talking points for the advocacy. I have a list of talking points that I've used in almost calls. Our pre-K is already gone, you know, where do we go? So that, that would be, that's a big change, but that's, that's one of the ones that we would have to have a conversation about probably, probably by the next board meeting, depending on what happens with funding.
Right. So we see, we see the decrease every time we open the mail and get a check. So it's continually happening and then it's only going to pile up as far as the deficit goes.
Correct.
So we have to react.
There is, there's, so I'm working with region-wide advocacy and I'm working on Fort Edward advocacy as well. But as you know, the state doesn't have any money to really give anybody. But I am having conversations just about Fort Edward with Kerry Warner and I am having conversations with the State Education Department just about Fort Edward situation. Because I'm trying to get some answers on what happens. I know the board has heard this before, but this doesn't happen, it never has happened where, where somebody's in this kind of situation where they could just run out of, run out of money by the end of the year. So they don't have any answers. And that's coming from, you know, some of the top, the top brass of the State Education Department. And we had Chris Lee and Shannon, our attorney, in on executive session last time. You guys heard similar information from her because she's been part of some of those calls with the State Education Department. So I just want to, we'll put that out publicly that we are having those conversations, but there are no, there are no concrete answers because it doesn't occur as what we're told by the State Education Department. And I tell you, Jim Duster's fully on board. He is, absolutely. He's a, he's a great advocate and he coordinates. He obviously has a little better contact with the State Education Department, but in my five years here, I've gotten to have, for better or worse, quite a bit of contact with the same people. So Jim has no idea either, down the road, the problems that we're looking at and hashing through and trying to figure out answers. There is nobody that has. Right, because, no, no. He's the first line of defense.
All right, so and we're going to schedule a finance committee meeting prior to the next board and watch for the audit, right?
We absolutely should.
We should.
Yeah.
So we'll do that and we'll keep, kind of get a current state of the.
Dan, was there a letter drafted up that I know that Mr. mentioned that at the last meeting?
Yeah, I think Kerry, Kerry Trask said, I have not yet, but it's on my to-do list. I actually started one this weekend, I just did not get it completed. Dan, you missed a talking point that you said you had written up, if you could. Yeah. Get that to us, because I don't have more for those guys to figure out. Absolutely, I can, I can do that. Good, they'll all be on the same page. Yep. And what's that?
Then we have all the committee, but you'll send out the.
Yep, I'll send something out, yep. And I'll, and that's going to depend if I want the, the auditors are available. So that's going to, we'll have to be, I'll ask the board to be a little bit flexible, but I'll get a couple of dates from them. And that way you can have that conversation with them.
Awesome. All right, I'm going to move to consent agenda, but obviously things are crazy around there and the folks that are here are working their tails off, so some information came through late. So I want to make sure that we're all comfortable before we do any of the consent agendas. Is everyone fully aware and versed on all those consent items?
I am not. I haven't had a chance to read any of them, so what comes up, I'll just say.
So is it okay with the board if we table these for review and then we vote on, vote on next month?
So I.
Except for the Y no one we have.
Yes, so I would, I would recommend that A and C, B table, but that you act on B and D if possible.
Yeah, I think enough of this morning, so they, they came in early, so we're good with the warrants and claims, right? All right, okay, so let's, I need a motion to table consent agenda A and C. Go. Todd. All in favor?
Aye.
Good.
Aye.
Okay, awesome. All right, so we're all good there.
That was eight, careful.
Need a motion to approve the warrants and claims for July 2020 and September 2020.
And the approval of the bunches.
Oh, you want them to go, okay, so I need a, I need a motion for B and D, how's that? Chris and Joe, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All good there, eight zero. All right, action items, we don't have any correct. So I need a motion to approve contracting for shared transport of specific students with the Hartford Central District for the 2020 and 2021 school year. Your motion. Todd. Chris. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, I need a motion to approve the contract for shared transport of specific students with the Whitehall Central School District for 2020, 2021 school year. Need a motion. James. Joe. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All good, eight zero. Motion to approve contracting for shared transport of specific students with the Ford and Central School District, 2020, 2021. Your motion. Joe. Todd. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anita.
Anita, you're good?
We didn't lose our.
She's on you, so.
All right, I just hope to make sure that that, yeah, we didn't lose that. Anita, can you, are you going to go on that last item?
Yeah, I'm sorry, yes, I just, something happened.
Thank you.
Eight zero. Okay. Motion to adopt new adult meal pricing for 2020, 2021 as required by New York State. Breakfast at Fort Edward shall increase from $2.25 to $2.37 plus tax and lunch shall increase from $3.93 to $3.96 plus tax as required by New York State. Need a motion. Chris, Ella, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Yeah, eight zero. Motion to approve the MOA between the Fort Edward School District, the FETA and a specific employee that was attached to our board patents. Chris Miles? Need a second. He's mentioned later on.
Yeah, I know, yeah.
Let's go to get a second on it and then we can have a discussion. But we need to act on, that's fine, I need a second.
That's, that's not okay. Okay, I'm okay with that.
Second. Todd's got the second, any discussion?
Well, no, I'm not second, yeah.
I'm not second, but you're clear. Okay, I still need a second, folks. And we could table, put it to exec if you want, maybe so. Joe, any discussion?
I don't know, I didn't write it all over this.
All right, so I think we're going to need to.
Your motion to table.
Yeah, all right, so.
The motion is going to die.
I'm going to take that motion, yeah, motion's going to die. I need a motion to table it. Joe. Thank you. I was waiting for that, okay. Second for table, thanks, Todd. Okay, so we are motioning, we are tabling F, all in favor?
Aye.
Anita?
Aye.
Christine, did you vote? You're saying, okay. Seven zero one, thank you.
We'll discuss in executive session.
We will discuss in executive session. Motion to accept a donation from the Woodman Life Chapter, number 461, in the amount of $1,000 for school supplies slash Chromebooks.
I'm going to motion that up.
James. Joe, any discussion other than thank you very much, that was a very wonderful donation from a local group and.
James and Joe, sorry, I.
James and Joe, yeah.
I caught up with the good news of a thousand dollars.
Yeah, it was, it's good news, $1,000 donation and they said for school supplies, Chromebooks, wherever the need is greater. So that was awesome to get a donation like that, so thank you to Wood.
Are we still waiting for Chromebooks to come in, Dan? We are, yeah, yeah, yeah. They're October, is what we're being told, so we'll see. It's a nationwide shortage. Yeah. We go on and on.
Uh, thanks again to Woodman Life, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Let me expect to know on that. Okay.
I will send that, I will send something to Woodman Life, number 461, once we have purchased whatever we're going to purchase. But that was a very nice gesture for them, they called and said, we'd like to do something to help.
Those are familiar names on the board of directors.
They're, they're both, both.
Yeah, okay, all right. Thanks again for those folks. Okay, personnel. First one's a telephone. You see that's on the line?
Yeah, Sam, are you still there?
I'm here.
Before we do the motion, Sam, did you want to read your wonderful letter that you submitted to the board or?
I can, I'm going to try and get through it. I'm going to read it. It's equally as tough to, to be here, but I'm going to read through it. Just bear with me if I have to stop, all right? All right, please. Please allow this letter to serve as my notice of a resignation effective at the end of the working day on Wednesday, October 14th, 2020. The past seven plus years of service to the students, families and faculty of Fort Edward have been hands down some of the most rewarding years of my life. Each year brought in wonderful opportunities to grow closer to the family that exists at Fort Edward and is with a heavy heart that I'm making this decision. To the students of Fort Edward, I wish you all the best and I know that you will continue on to achieve greatness. For those that I've had the opportunity to work directly with, you'll always be a part of me no matter where I go in life. You are what has made each day bright and exciting and I always look back on the great times that we shared. You are an important part of the world that we live in. There truly are opportunities around each corner if you go out and take them. Find your passion, support one another and share your flame with the world while you make it a brighter place. To the families of Fort Edward, thank you. Thank you for your support and thank you for looking after each and every learner in the ways that you know best. You're welcome to me and as one of your own and for that, I will be forever grateful. To the faculty and staff of Fort Edward, you have become and you always will be my family. Our support of each other has never faltered through thick and thin and you've helped me become the person that I am today. Each one of you has had an impact on my life and I will take that with me no matter, I will take that with me wherever I go. While our memories may become distant stories, the friendships we forged will last a lifetime. Please continue to share your passion for teaching with each new student that enters these halls and instill the sense of pride and strength in our students the way that we have done for generations. I wish everyone at Fort Edward a safe and healthy remainder of their school year and remember to always have Fort Edward pride. And I sincerely want to thank each and every one of you and everyone at Fort Edward that I've ever had an opportunity to work with even so much for a minute or an hour. It's a family that exists there and I'm very fortunate to have been a part of it and I wish everyone the best going forward and thank you to all of you. And thank you.
Thank you, Sam. Thank you.
Don't worry, Sam, we're going to get a whole year's worth of work out here before the board. I'll be running for the door.
I, I wouldn't expect anything less.
So I need a motion to accept the letter of resignation from a position of 1.0 FTE kindergarten to 12 principal from Samuel Robinson Ratty, effective end of the day, October 14th. I want to say 2023, I want to say 2020. Chris, what's your name? Joe? Any discussion? Sam said it all. Thank you very much, Sam.
Thanks, Sam.
Thank you.
Grow in that position. I was here when we got you out of the classroom and we were worried about that. You're just so great in the classroom and you've done a fantastic job on your role as principal and would be missed, but we wish you the best, of course.
Best of luck, Sam.
Thank you all, I appreciate it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Eight zero, so carried. Motion to accept the letter of resignation.
Totally so.
Motion to accept the letter of resignation from a position of 1 FTE science teacher from Karen Jones, effective September 1st, 2020. James. Joe. Any discussion? I'd like to formally say thank you to Karen for years of service. I was also on the board when we hired Karen. She hit the ground running, did a lot of great work, special education and as a principal and was so accommodating for us and all the different things that we asked of her. So for the record, thank you, Karen, you'll be missed as well. All in favor?
Aye.
Did you get the, I didn't get the first and the second, did you get voting?
Yes.
James and Joe, thank you.
Anita, thank you. Motion to accept the letter of resignation from a position of bus aide from Cindy DeAngelico, effective September 1, 2020. Chris. Ella. Any discussion? Thank you for your service, Cindy. All in favor?
Aye.
There's another people. Motion to accept the letter of resignation from Sandra Mahoney from a position of teaching assistant, effective September 9, 2020. Your motion. Chris, Ella, any discussion? I know that Sandy's done just about every job under the sun.
She's a talented, she's a talented lady. She's a lot she can do. She helps on her eye program.
Yeah, she's always been there, one at a time. I'd like to thank Sandy, I don't know if she's on the line, but.
I did see her on there.
Thank you, Sandy, for your tremendous years of service. You will be missed. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to accept the letter of resignation from Kim Beely from the position of Teacher Assistant, effective September 1st, 2020. Chris? Christina? Any discussion? Thank you for your service, Kim, as well. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to appoint Joanna Scott using applicable grants, donations, and CARES Act funding as a teacher mentor for a specific individual per the FETA contract, the remainder of the one-year mentoring period. Stipend shall be prorated accordingly. Need a motion? Todd? Joe? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Good, eight, zero.
So, I'm G. The name is Heather Havens. Do apologize.
I can let it go before that. Motion to appoint Heather Havens using applicable grants, donations, and CARES Act funding as teacher mentor for a specific individual per the FETA contract. Christina, Joe? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to appoint Lisa Corlou using grants, donations, CARES Act funding as a .5 teacher mentor for a specific individual per the FETA contract. Stipend shall be prorated accordingly to reflect .5. Chris and Todd? Any discussion?
Dan, .5.
So we have specific staff members who are being appointed as .5, so the mentors should be the same.
All in favor?
Aye.
Yeah, everybody?
Anita?
Sorry, yes.
Anita? Motion to appoint Marion Stark using applicable grants, donations, and CARES Act funding as teacher mentor coordinator for the 2020-2021 school year. Chris? Ella, did I see Ella's name? Ella, any discussion?
Yeah, was she, she was in position last year?
She is the coordinators for each of the years as that I have been here.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Be resolved, Board of Education of Fort Edward Union Free School District hereby accepts the recommendation of the superintendent to appoint Joy Glass using applicable grants, donations, community schools allocation, and CARES Act funding, position of part-time cafeteria aide slash worker commencing on September 1st, 2020. Miss Glass is appointed at an hourly rate of pay, 1333 per hour. Current starting salary per the FESS contract is 1310, plus credit for previous service. With all of the benefits and salary reductions per the FESS contract and effective MOAs, pending the receipt and final review of all official documents and required employment paperwork. Need a motion? Todd? Ella? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Be resolved, the Board of Education of the Fort Edward Union Free School District hereby accepts the recommendation, superintendent to appoint Barbara Seymour using applicable grants, donations, community schools, allocation, and CARES Act funding, position of part-time cafeteria aide slash worker commencing on September 11th, 2020. Miss Seymour is appointed at an hourly rate of pay at 1333 per hour. Current starting salary per the FESS contract is 1310. With all of the benefits and salary reductions.
I made a mistake.
Yeah, that's.
You're appointing her at 1310 per hour.
Yes.
So we're gonna ask you to amend that.
We'll amend that. Miss Seymour is appointed at an hourly rate of pay at 1310 per hour. Current starting salary per the FESS contract is 1310. With all of the benefits and salary reductions per the FESS contract and effective MOAs, pending the receipt and final review of all official documents and required employment paperwork. Need a motion? Joe? Chris? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Those two ladies did a great job today along with our new cafeteria manager and our new cook manager. So the cafeteria manager and the cook, head cook are both, both these employees from Cap Reg because they're running our cafeteria this year and these two part-time ladies are our employees. That's how that service works. They did a great job helping keep the food gets served, the tables get cleaned afterwards along with our cleaning staff, so everybody's making it work well in the gymnasium. So thanks to both of them.
Just related to table motion. So I think we're, uh, I need to go to table. Yeah, I need a motion to table L, the discussion during exec. Joe? James? Discussion will be held in exec. We'll take action likely afterward. All in favor?
Aye.
More extension. Seven, zero, one. Be resolved, Board of Education of Fort Edward Union Free School District hereby accepts the recommendation, superintendent to appoint Russell Batty using applicable grants, donations, CARES Act funding to a three-year probationary appointment as a .5 FTE teacher of special education in the special education tenure area commencing September 1st, 2020 and ending August 31st, 2023. Contingent upon compliance with the requirements of the educational law, Mr. Batty holds an initial certification in special education. Mr. Batty is appointed at a starting salary of.
Just do per the FETA.
Per the FETA contract. With all other benefits and salary reductions per the FETA and effective MOAs, pending the receipt and review of all official transcripts and required employment paperwork. Need a motion? Chris, your hand's gonna get tired tonight. And Todd. Any discussion?
Were you tired? Is it Sam's side?
Pretty much.
Got lucky to get somebody down.
We, we are very fortunate.
All in favor?
Aye.
Be resolved, the Board of Education of the Fort Edward Union Free School District hereby accepts the recommendation, the superintendent to restore Ms. Debbie Labattin using applicable grants, donations, community schools allocation, and CARES Act funding from a .9 FTE position as a school counselor to a 1.0 FTE effective September 1st, 2020. Need a motion? Joe? Chris? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All good. Eight, zero. Be resolved, Board of Education of Fort Edward Union Free School District hereby accepts the recommendation, superintendent to restore Ms. Joanna Scotch using applicable grants, donations, community schools allocation, and CARES Act funding from a .8 FTE position as a school counselor to a 1.0 FTE effective September 1st, 2020. Need a motion? Joe? Todd? Any discussion?
Just had a question.
Sure.
Is that whole amount going through those particular funding lines or just the difference? Say it again, Joe, sorry. So it goes from .8 to 1.0? Yeah, so, so which. Is it all of it or part of it? Yeah, so there, the salaries are going into multiple lines. Okay. So the, as much of the salaries as we can put towards the federal grants, we start there. Because the counseling team has taken over the CSE duties that have been vacated by somebody who resigned. So that, that's where we are. So we start with the federal grants, our 611, 619 grants, and then we move on to community schools to cover another portion. And so we're covering most of this without the general fund, but there is some general fund. So we're maximizing the grants first. Did I answer it correctly? You answered it, thank you.
I think that's.
What that looked like before was very scary, so what it looks like now is.
Again, we've got, we've got something scary over our looking at.
Right.
We've got to operate.
That's, that area is tough. All in favor?
Aye.
Be resolved, Board of Education of Fort Edward Union Free School District hereby accepts the recommendation, superintendent to restore Ms. Jocelyn Nolan.
Correct.
Using applicable grants, donations, community school allocation, and CARES Act funding from a .9 FTE position as a school psychologist, point, I'm sorry, 1.0 FTE effective September 1st, 2020. Joe? Todd? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Eight, zero.
I'm gonna just jump in, so that the counseling team had a conversation with Mr. Ratty and myself and they have been meeting to make sure that we're working clarity with that special education piece. So they were very open to making it, making it work. I just wanted to put that out there that they are completely committed and on board for the process.
Awesome. Be resolved, Board of Education of Fort Edward Union Free School District hereby accepts the recommendation of the superintendent to restore Ms. Larinda Huffington using applicable grants, donations, community schools allocation, CARES Act funding from a .8 FTE position as a physical education teacher to a 1.0 FTE effective September 1st, 2020. Huntington will add the middle school, high school, health classes to her teaching load. Christina? Joe? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So there was, there was, uh.
You have one sit up there, right? We didn't want contact, second public comment session prior to going into exec. I know we do have someone that says you want.
Yes, I just wanted to, since Mrs. Flowell, it's John Porty's mother. So, so Mrs. Flowell, I just wanna, are you still there? Ms. Flowell, are you still there? Yeah, so I just wanna give you an opportunity to say, uh, make the board, we don't normally talk about specific students or specific items or individuals during graduation, but if you're just looking for the board to affirm that, that will, that the work, they'll ask the administration to work with your son and you, that to make this happen is about to be done, you can certainly do that. If you have a specific question, I just don't want you to talk too much about your specific son on the public meeting because we're not supposed to allow that.
Oh, okay. No, I was just, it was a, just a.
Go ahead.
It was just a question about, um, how I can go about getting my son to graduate this year. He only has, he only needs 1.5 credits to graduate and I'm just trying to figure out how we can go about getting him to graduate this year instead of having to go back next year for a full year just for a credit and a half.
Sam, can you, do you mind, uh, do you mind just responding quickly here? And I know, I see you, Robyn, you're gonna reach out to her tomorrow or the next day.
What was that? I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
Might be hearing too.
His mic's not working, he's. I can't. So Sam's having some, Mr. Ratty, sorry, is having some microphone trouble. We can, uh. So, Ms. Flowell, Mr. Ratty will give you a call tomorrow. Certainly, it's something that we can do, that, that we want, we want him to graduate rather than have to come back for a complete year for a credit and a half. That makes perfect sense to me and certainly the board members around the table are shaking their heads that if we can make, if we can make it happen, it's the best thing for everybody in the world.
This will. So again, I will, I'm not sure I missed that one second thing, but I can at least, I don't wanna try to adhere to the guidelines of a public meeting. I did review the transcript again for a third or fourth time with the school counselor. I don't, like I said, I would prefer to talk about it in a more private setting. Or not, we'll speak tomorrow or Wednesday.
Right, thanks, Sam.
Two, two other things before we go into exec. There was something that really awesome happened yesterday at the marketplace, a lot of great people.
Yes.
Out of now one of them, I couldn't make it yesterday, except my daughter, my stead, but I didn't know if there was anyone from the public who was a part of that that wanted to speak to it. Carrie, maybe, if she's available or.
Your box are in.
I know Michelle and Laurie and so, so many people were involved in that yesterday and I believe it was a huge success. Thanks for all that. And also, the board was contacted by someone during the week and a couple of questions. Search the answers to those questions. I did wanna touch a little bit on some of the things that have been said in this room regarding those monies raised and the question that came up was what happens to that money if it's donated to the school? What is it allocated for? Things like that and very generally, Dan can speak to it more accurately, but it can be donated to the school as a general thing like athletics or arts, but it can't be donated for anything specifically that is not all-inclusive. So a particular sport, maybe that's not all-inclusive or it's not typically all-inclusive. So it would be donated to the board and then it becomes the public's money. So if folks say, hey, I donated 50 bucks for football and football's not happening this year, I'd like my 50 bucks back, that doesn't happen. It becomes the public's money and then it's allocated appropriately in the general area of where the donation was directed. Is that correct?
Yep, that nailed it. I can, I can, I'll speak quickly to a couple of those questions if the board will indulge me. Because we've been working on those for many, many years and I know you received a communication of somebody asking about them specifically. So I think one of the questions was, and you can, I know you've gotten there, that are costs like for the athletics, the money, the thing they're raising money for is athletics and extracurriculars. So are the costs for officials and transportation included in the numbers that were given to the booster club? The answer is absolutely, they were. Absolutely, they were. All costs were included in there. Coaches were on the line and I asked about if there's extra costs. The only thing that wasn't included was any kind of equipment or supplies because we said we would, the coaches said we can make it run for a year without equipment or supplies if we need to. So that would answer that one. Todd got the one about what happens if things don't run after the donation happens. He is correct. The money, once accepted by the board, becomes public money and we cannot refund it to people if something doesn't happen. So that's worth having that out there. And I believe the other one was about, has the school looked into what happens if finances continue to go the way they are and if we get to the end of the merger study and both communities vote no? Yes, we have and that's what I looked to a little bit earlier and we've been in contact for the better part of two years with the Education Department as well as our. as well as our attorneys, and as well as the Department of State. There is no answer on what happens if we were to get to the end of a merger study and our school district is out of money. There is no redistricting that occurs automatically, I think that was part of the question. There is no state takeover that's automatic. This is uncharted territory. And that's not just from the board, that is from the State Education Department, highest level. And the same from our lawmakers, there is no case law that says what is gonna happen here. And again, this is an if, but that was a question. If we get there, I think the board was asking, what has the board looked into for the what-ifs? And we have been looking at the what-ifs for a long time here. I think those were the main questions that were asked.
The other part of the what-ifs is the study that was done by Rick Tins that showed us we just continue to increase in the money that it costs to run this place, so taxes go up. And reductions continue to be a thing that happens here. Unless someone comes up with money from the state or somewhere else. But we operate as we did this year with a budget, and we have to try to bridge that gap. So that's basically the answer until we get some other type of direction. And that's why the board is looking into what we're looking into because that seems to be a responsibility of the board to have to do, so...
And I would just add that I think that in response to that letter, I would say this. I think that we have been very forthcoming with that information, although it is not popular, but it's not easy to hear. So I'm happy to answer those questions, or have the board do. But I do think, I also wanna say, I think I've kept the board in the loop on all that information. I know we've got a few new members who are coming up to speak quickly, because it's a lot. And I believe that, you know, overall, the board has been hearing that from me as it unfolds, and as I find the information's been coming back. And if that's different, you know, the board could certainly just tell me that, hey, we're not sure that that's an accurate statement, Dan, and I'd be happy to address it, but...
We're all there when we have to have the information, so it's pretty accurate.
Dan, that number that was given to the Booster Club, was there a breakdown there as far as with band, music, was there a breakdown?
Yeah. So, yeah, so Carrie had asked, the Booster Club had asked for that specifically. Carrie reached out to me. I sent her, I haven't had time to build her a spreadsheet for athletics. Back in the early summer, I built a pretty detailed spreadsheet. For the extracurriculars, the costs are easier because the cost for the extracurriculars are the advisors. And then only for, a few of them have some transportation. I'll use the example of ski club, so there's some transportation included there. I actually met with the Booster Club. They sent, they had five or six members meet with me tonight at 5:00. But I have an email back and forth with Carrie Cranskus as best I can. Until last Thursday or Friday, she and I spoke. It was Thursday, it was about 7:00 o'clock at night. I was getting ready to leave here, and I reached out to her and said, hey. And she asked if we could just meet. I said, great, I'll get you in Monday, because it's easier than the email back and forth. And if I just block out a half an hour, we can all sit down together, and I can answer questions rapid for her. So that occurred tonight, it was a good meeting, shared information. But the extracurricular breakdown cost went, that same night, it went Thursday night there. And really what was sent was just a picture of that page of the teacher's contract lists all those amounts. So they asked some questions about that this evening. And they're creating, they're creating a plan in their head of what they wanna do with any funds that have been raised.
Okay, these questions came to me, so I deferred to you.
Yeah, yeah, we met, I think it was, I felt it was very productive meeting.
There's some other good stuff happening. And West Mountain sent a letter to the parents who had their kids in ski club before and said that they would honor the school pricing, even if the school couldn't do the ski club. So that's kind of awesome that they're gonna do that as long as kids register on time. Obviously, the transportation's on the parents'. Yeah, but they're gonna honor the school pricing, which is pretty awesome, sir.
That's a great program.
Yeah, it is a great program, absolutely. Okay, with that, I need a motion to enter into executive session to discuss matters or into negotiations. Joe? Chris? Board of Education members and other individuals invited to executive session. Reminder that all matters discussed during executive session must be kept in the strictest confidence. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, that's 8-0. Folks, we will be back as we will likely have action. But we're going to take the black...
We're actually, so since we're here, I think the easiest way is, I have to use many machines instead of having to turn them all off. We all get up and go next door into the conference room, and then we'll just... Nita, we will call you on the telephone.
That works.
I like it.
I'll call you on, from my cellphone, Nita.
Okay, sounds good.
This, we'll let this percolate, but we do have two items we did not take action on, so I would expect we'll be taking action when we come back. Before we go, I will stop the recording, just so we're not recording that time for the folks who come back and read or watch these afterwards. I will hit the stop recording, and then we will record when we come back, the rest of the meeting. You guys need Sam for anything else?
No.
You guys need Charlene for anything else?
No.
Sam and Charlene, have a great night.
Thank you.
Have a good day tomorrow.
Again, thank you all for everything, and let's run it back to the top tomorrow.
You were approved.
Yes.
We gotta get back to the motion to return to public.
Need a motion to return to public session. Ella and Todd? All in favor?
Aye.
We made it back.
Thanks, both who are still tuning in. So please give me the one I have first.
Yep, we're gonna go back to... F. Yep, F? Motion to approve the MOA.
But we have F.
So F, probably called out.
I know. Thanks, my F is regarding...
Action.
Gosh, it's up.
Page three.
Oh, sorry.
You gotta go, yeah, it's action.
Yeah, it's F from action, I got you. All right, sorry. I need a motion to approve the MOA between the Fordham School District and the FETA and a specific employee.
Is Nita back on?
Yes, she's in, she voted, yep.
Need a motion?
Motion.
She's on the board.
Joe? All in favor?
Aye.
That one's good. Okay, so if we have, we have one abstaining, two abstaining, we have two abstaining, so...
Six, zero, two. Then we're gonna go to personnel.
All right, be resolved, Board of Education, the Fordham Union Free School District hereby accepts the recommendation superintendent to appoint Jeff Durkey using applicable grants, donations, and CARE Act funding as a .8 FTE long-term substitute teacher of science in the science 7 to 12 tenure area commencing September 1, 2020 and ending June 30, 2020. Mr. Durkey holds a bachelor's degree in environmental science as a pursuit and is pursuing certification in earth science and is appointed with all other benefits and salary reduction for the FETA contract and effective MOAs, pending the receipt and review of all official transcripts and required employment paperwork. Chris?
Motion.
Late there.
I just wanted to say, I think we should read June 30.
Twenty-one.
Oh, yeah, you're right.
Twenty twenty-one.
Please amend to June 30, 2021. Thank you, Christina. So we have two motions on the table, all in favor?
Aye.
Good, all good, and two abstaining, so six, zero, two.
Six, zero, two.
Motion moves.
Yes, yeah, do you realize that, what her error, I mean, I'll go back to the other one.
Is that the same thing?
Yeah.
I'll amend both.
And that, being that, need a motion to adjourn. Joe? Nita, Joe, we missed the needed motion.
Christina, Joe.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That was eight, zero, zero. And that is eight, eight...
Forty-six, looks like, yeah. Thank you, everyone, for joining us. We appreciate you attending. I think this could go...
The microphones and speakers stay on so I can turn all these off just so folks weren't exiting.